Oh, there we go.
Hey.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm assuming you're the one that just called in. Oh. Can Sierra, can you hear us? Okay?
Yeah, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, thanks. Okay, great. Well, I have everything ready on my end, so I guess we'll do roll call. Adam, if that's all right.
Yes, please.
Mr. Pahavich?
Here.
Mr. McNulty?
Here.
Mr. Trebelis?
Here.
Mr. Pierce? Oh, Les, are you there? Did he get kicked out?
Sorry about that.
Oh, it's okay.
I'm mute, I'm mute.
Oh, yeah. And Ms. Harris?
Here.
And we also have our alternate member, Rick Beer, here as well. So I'm happy to say all of our members are on this training and thanks for being here. Adam, if I can just go down the agenda, I kind of wanted to introduce the staff since we've never really been able to do that. And also, we have, well, I'm definitely three new members in the past year. So I think a lot of administrative changes have happened internally with the staff too. Jeff or myself, I'm Michelle Bonney. I'm the Development and Zoning Director of the Township. My title was recently changed last fall as my role will also focus on a more economic development side of things. Haven't gotten to that point yet, but we'll get there eventually. But I still will be the primary host for the zoning commission hearings and your main point of contact for any rezoning, zoning amendment applications and as well as the 23 overlay applications. And with that, I'd like to have my staff kind of go around and introduce themselves and what their role has been with zoning commission. Jeff, you want to go first?
Yeah, I'm Jeff Beard. Just got my title changed to Senior Zoning Officer. Going back to school to get a GIS certification so we can start doing some more GIS work in the township. I'll be the backup for Michelle if she can't make a meeting. So I'm her backup for the zoning commission. I handle the BZA board and those hearings. And then I do the enforcement in the township and do all the sign permits and some compliances. But for zoning commission, I'm usually just a backup and kind of another set of eyes and ears depending on what type of case you guys have.
Yeah, and especially with the 23 overlay application, since there's a lot of detail that's up front, he's been a great help as another reviewer for that.
Very good.
Well, Nancy, do you want to go next?
I'm Nancy Fay. I'm the zoning assistant. I take care of the legal notices. I make sure they're put together and sent to the publication and go out on the listserv and on the website. I also make sure the zoning report, the meetings roll on the zoning report for publication for that.
Yeah, and we can thank Nancy for all the comments and letters we got for the North Farms application. So she helped organize that for us. And she's the newest on our team. So Nancy started, was it, I don't know, time's flying these days. Was it last summer or fall?
It was late summer, early fall.
Okay. So we have expanded. Nancy's position is new, so it was really just Jeff and I with an intern, which Brett will go next, and Cindy, of course. But with the growth that we're having, we needed another member of our team. So thanks for being here. Well, with that, Cindy, if you can hear, if you're still on, if you want to introduce yourself, that'd be great.
I'm Cindy Davis, and I do all the meeting minutes for both the zoning commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals. Trying to decipher all the things that are said during the course of the meeting. And then you guys get to go and try and figure out just what I've missed and what I thought you said and what you didn't say.
I mean, it's really not that, yeah, it's really not that many errors. So I think you take you review them very well. And yeah, I think all of us can appreciate having a written set of minutes for these, especially with the complicated hearings.
Thank you.
And then Brett, if you want to introduce yourself?
Yeah. Hello, I'm Brett Wimkin. I'm the zoning intern here. Currently a student at the Ohio State University, majoring in city planning, minoring in architectural studies. And then for zoning commission materials, I really just kind of help out any way that I can. And I also help with the public comment on YouTube.
Cool. Yeah, we've been partnering with Ohio State probably as long as I've been here, which is over five years. So we always have an intern through their planning, city planning program. And Brett's been a huge help. So like he says, he just jumps on whatever we need. So with that, I guess, Pete, I'll leave it up to you. I don't know if you want to share your screen or you want me to flip through things, whatever.
I would prefer if you would be able to do it, if that's all right.
Yep, yep, yep. And yeah, again, Pete, all the members are here. Adam Pahavich is our zoning commission chair. Dennis McNulty is our vice chair. Sierra Harris, Les Pierce, and Rick Beer are our newest members. Sierra, I don't think we've had you on an application yet. So I think this, so brand new. Overall, our commission is a pretty new board. And Christine Trebelis has been with the zoning commission. This is her second term now, so.
Great.
Thanks.
So thanks for, thanks for having me. My name is Pete Griggs. Our office will be serving as township legal counsel and in zoning matters. And we've about a couple of months now, Michelle, we've been working with Michelle and Jeff and the rest of the team on some issues. And, you know, one of the things that we provide to our clients is, you know, periodic training, just, you know, varying types. And this is kind of just a broad overview tonight. I don't know you that well yet. I'm hoping I'm going to get a, it sounds like I'm going to get to know you really well with the North Farms application coming up. But by way of background, I've been doing zoning and land use law and specializing in township law for about the past 18 years. I represent townships all over Ohio. I serve as legal counsel to the Ohio Township Association, and I handle all their zoning litigation. I've been to the Supreme Court. I've been at the Supreme Court on complaint cases four times. Various courts of appeals on, you know, general welfare zoning. I help in townships that get sued in federal court. So that's just kind of the background that I bring. And I know from my experience, you know, everybody does things slightly different. Not everybody does things exactly the same. And it's certainly not my purpose or my goal to come in and tell you that the way you do things are wrong or you shouldn't do that. My job is to kind of watch how you do things and make recommendations. And, you know, I'm just the attorney. I'm going to give you my opinion on how I think things should be done. But ultimately, you know, you're the client and you're going to control how things are done. I've had the opportunity and I really wouldn't call it a privilege, but I've been in some very, very emotional zoning hearings throughout the years. And, you know, it's, again, that experience in terms of running a meeting and and what to look for and what to consider that I, you know, I want to go through a little bit tonight. And I want you guys to ask questions as we, as we go along. And this is a lot of material. And I'm not going to, you know, I'm not going to go over it word for word, but I just want you guys to have kind of a broad background. And if you take away, I think one thing, two things tonight. One, what, what is my function as a zoning commission member? What function am I serving in the grand scheme of township zone? And then the second thing is that I want you to take away is being able to articulate a reason for my decision. And I think if you can understand those two things, I think you're ahead of the curve. And your code makes your job a little bit easier because sometimes zoning commission members have to try to decide and what function they're serving. Am I serving in a legislative capacity or am I serving in an administrative capacity? And, and we'll get to that. But 99.9% of the time, based upon your code, you're going to be serving in a legislative capacity, which really simplifies things in terms of your decision making and also how you, how you run a meeting. So I have materials and you know, there's, you know, there's an overview and I really don't want to, you know, get too in-depth. But townships are what I like to call creatures of statute. So they can only, they only have that authority based upon specific statutes. So in other words, if we don't have a statute that lets us do it, we can't do it. And it's the exact opposite of a city. A city basically has what they call whole moral powers. So the analysis is just the opposite. The city can do it unless there's a statute that prohibits them. So townships are creatures of statute. We can only do if a statute permits us to do it. And so 519 is the zoning statute. It basically says how we can, how we can operate. Under what parameters can we have zoning? And I would say there's two big, two big limitations on township zoning. And the first one, and historically, I've kind of glossed over the constitutional limitations. But what we're seeing in the last three to four years, particularly in central Ohio, and I know the developers have belonged to, you know, belonged to several organizations. And I know these conversations are happening with developers and their legal counsel. So I want to spend just a little bit, a little bit of time on constitutional limitations and what you may hear from developers when you're considering rezoning applications. But really, when you're considering rezoning application, you're engaging in a legislative function. And what that means is you are, you are creating new law, if you will. You're setting policy. You're not interpreting law. You're basically coming up with a decision as to how how property should be looked at under our zoning code. So again, am I rezoning to a PD or am I rezoning to a straight district? That is setting policy. And then once that policy is set, then Michelle and everybody else basically takes the law within that and makes it an administrative determination as to whether or not you're, the developers are in compliance. So the good news is that when a legislative function, the courts typically are going to defer to townships. And it's very difficult for a developer to basically say that there's not a legitimate reason for our zoning regulations. Page two, Michelle. So on page two, this is item C. There's a two-part, there's a two-part test that's called the Goldberg test. And it's a famous test. And a lot of people refer to it as the takings test. But it's really, it doesn't include a takings analysis, but it's, but it's, but it's got another part to it. The first one is, is the zoning provision arbitrary, unreasonable, without any relation to health, safety, and welfare? And that's, that's what we look at as the on-the-face analysis. If you look at the regulation on the face, is there a legitimate reason? And it's what they call a substantive due process analysis. Very difficult. The second part of that is truly the taking part of that. Does the zoning as applied to me as a property owner? And this is the key. Deprive me of all economically viable use of the land. So a lot of times you'll hear, you'll hear a developer saying, well, it's not the highest and best use. Or we're not going to make as much money if we have to develop it at a rural residential as opposed to a multifamily. That's not the standard. The standard is, does it deprive me of all economically viable use of the land? And that's a very fact-specific case. A lot of times what happens is developers have to, have to hire all kinds of experts to be able to show that being forced into a particular, not being able to rezone has deprived me of all economically viable use of the property. It's very difficult to do. And you don't see, you don't see court cases really anymore on that second prom. Where you're seeing them, and it's not necessarily in your materials, but where you're seeing them in the last three to four, five years are on what we call a procedural due process claim and an equal protection claim. And they're making those arguments under the United States Constitution. And I would say we've had four cases in the last two and a half years, and we're getting our fifth case. And this is just in central Ohio. So what developers are doing is either A, if rezoning is denied ultimately by the trustees, or let's say that the township approves of rezoning and it gets put on referendum. Developers are suing the townships under these, they're taking you to federal court. And they're suing you under a due process claim and equal protection claim. And then what they're arguing is that under the due process, that there's, they're entitled to, they have a protected interest, a protected property interest, and they're entitled to the zoning. That's the due process. The equal protection one, which is the one that really concerns me is that you township are treating me differently than similarly situated property owners. So take, for example, a township in Delaware County. This property had rezoned several times. It was denied by the township. Finally, township approves it. And the residents put it on referendum. The developer suits. And I'm not going to bore you with all the procedural details, but the court said that there is, there could be a equal protection claim by the developer because residents have not put similarly situated projects on referendum. So there's an issue as to whether or not equal protection claim exists. We need to go to trial. So what developers do then is basically go back to the township under a statute, and it's ORC 505.07. And that statute allows the Board of Trustees to settle zoning cases and allows property to be rezoned as part of a court case. And it circumvents and is not subject to referendum. So those are kind of the arguments that we're seeing. Not a, not a taking issue, but more of these, these procedural and equal protection claims that developers are making. And we're seeing them even when the township approves it and it gets put on referendum. And then we're seeing it when, we're seeing it when developers get denied at the trustee level. We are, our most recent one that's going to be coming down the pipe is developer is, wants to rezone to a PD, meets all the general development standards, checks every box of the comp plan, and the trustee's still denied. And really didn't give a really good basis for it or rationale. And so, you know, they're going to get sued and they're going to force the township to try to negotiate under 505.07 and ultimately try to rezone the property or if the township can take their chances. So I think for your perspective, and we'll get, we'll get into decision making and what you need to look at. But I, you know, I think there's, there's two critical roles to be learned. And you guys set the table for the trustees in terms of how you articulate your decisions and getting, getting things up to the trustees. So, you know, being able to provide that rational basis helps on these particular, you know, these two types of challenges. Sometimes there's nothing you can do. And the residents will put it on referendum and so be it. That's their statutory right. And if a township gets sued, based upon that, it is what it is. But those are the two main issues that we see from a litigation perspective now facing townships. The other limitation is statutory, and I really don't want to go through all that. But the one that I think is probably most relevant for the zoning commission is the, is the lawful non-conforming use statute. And it's just something to keep in the back of your mind when you're doing text amendments, when you're rewriting code. And typically, the zoning commission works hand in hand with staff and kind of coming up with those and then processing, you know, through a text amendment process. Keep in mind that, you know, am I creating non-conforming situation when I'm doing text amendments? And, you know, sometimes you, you know, you don't have a choice. But just be mindful that we do have a statute that allows in the code, your zoning resolution also pretty much mimics the 51919, which basically allows for the, for the extension of lawful non-conforming uses. Some of the others, real quick, you know, outdoor advertising, ag is always a huge headache for the zoning department. Farm markets, cell towers, utilities, manufactured homes, small wind farms, those are all some of the limitations that, that we have to work with within the zoning realm. So I know we, you know, we're trying to keep things relatively tight tonight, so I just kind of wanted to brief those or in your materials. I don't know if anybody has any questions yet.
Pete, I have a question just regarding, and even though I know you indicated that it's not used often, but it just brings up a question with respect to the challenge of the two ways, and one of those ways, property owner saying that they haven't been able to, I guess, to have economically valuable use of the land or the maximum amount, what have you. My question as compared to what? Is it just simply there are studies that you accept, there are studies and the burden is on the owner to show, okay, I can get X value out of it if you allow me to do what I want to do. But the question is, as compared to what, does the zoning commission compare that to? Or you just accept it? Or it's kind of a, yeah, we think that makes sense? Or how does that go?
So in the, in the real world, they usually just make the claim. Les, they don't, they usually don't back it up. I, I typically, you know, just take it with a grain of salt. But the, but kind of the one of more recent cases, which is really old in terms of zoning litigation, was out of Cincinnati. And it, and the township had, I think in that particular case, I think it was like one unit per two acres. And centralized utilities had been, had basically been ran right across the front of the property. And basically, the developer was able to make an argument they were actually losing money. And the case got settled. So, you know, we really don't have a good footprint on how to handle that. But, but they would, you know, I would, if you wanted to, you know, if you wanted to basically put the developer or call the developer to the mat, well, you know, I would, I would need to see an economic analysis provided by an expert for the developer. And they're not going to do that because that takes a lot of time and money. So they'd rather just, you know, they'd rather just have the unveiled threats. And that's why I don't, you know, in the 18 years that I've been doing this, Les, I've not seen, they'll throw a takings claim out there, but any attorney is going to, going to throw everything they can on the wall and see what sticks. The best one that never sticks.
Okay.
So, you know, if I'm a zoning commission member and I want to basically call, call somebody to the mat, I want to see the studies. I want to see the economic analysis. Because otherwise, I find it hard time believing that if I can, if I can develop under a rural residential or a low-density, single-family PUD as opposed to a multifamily, chances are I'm still making money. And chances are I'm still making money in Orange Township because it's a popular place and people want to, you know, because of the schools, they want to, they want to live there. And the developer is going to be able to charge, you know, a higher premium, if you will, on a single-family dwelling as opposed to multifamily. So it's going to be tough to make that argument in Orange Township, real tough. But that's an excellent question. Most of my clients will simply kind of have a friendly reminder to the developer that it's just, you know, it's not highest and best, and you're required to show all, you're deprived of all economically viable use of the property. Do you have anything to back that up? And typically, developers don't.
I thank you for that insight.
Pete, I had a question. When you, when you mentioned that you don't want to create non-conforming uses when doing text amendments, would that also apply to planned districts? So we have, we have a single family and a commercial and industrial planned district with its own unique standards within it. And then they would have to seek divergences from it. It's kind of a backwards way of doing planned districts. It was something new here when I started. But because to me, almost every planned district has a divergence. So.
No, I don't have the same concern with planned districts because that's the, you know, with planned districts, that's the, that's the game that we're allowed to play, if you will.
Okay.
We're allowed to deviate. We're allowed to negotiate to a certain extent as opposed to a, to a standard or straight district. So I don't have as big a concern there in a planned district.
So you, you mean more when we go and update our zoning resolution to try not to create more? Okay.
Right, particularly in like a straight district, if you're changing lot size or, you know, that type of thing. And, you know, that's where you really want to be careful. But in a PD context, I don't have any heartburn.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a question on, Pete, I have a question on top of that one. Just so, like Old Lewis Center, The Village, pretty much all of those lots are non-conforming when they put the zoning in place for farm residential. And we have a lot of other lots like that too, that are non-conforming lots that either aren't as wide or aren't as big or they don't have the almost two acres that's required in farm residential. So when we update our code, do we keep it the same as it is now? Or do we make it less strict or?
I mean, I, I think you can do what you want to do, Jeff. I mean, I, I mean, I don't, to me, I would probably try to lessen the burden, if you will. But I mean, they're, they're going to have a right under your code. To. You know, that lawful nonconforming status of the lot is going to exist still. But I, I would probably say I'm not sure if, if, if you know that you. It probably is going to depend upon how we want to see that area developed. As to whether we increase or decrease. So.
Discussion.
Yeah.
Get to that as far as. We are, we are planning to eventually update our zoning resolution and I think that area in particular will be focused on more so than others.
Yeah, I think it's Jeff, just I guess it just depends and what you want to see. And I think that's a policy discussion. So I'm going to jump to page three. Creation and function of zoning commission and, and you know, some of this is. Kind of elementary and, and, and I don't want to spend time in it, but. Really, again, one of the things I want you to remember is that. The zoning commission usually acts in a legislative capacity. And in Orange Township. You ninety nine point nine percent of the time are going to be acting in a legislative capacity. And again, what does that mean? And in the terms of the rezoning context, it means you're setting policy. So. Your code is set up in such a way that. Whenever I, whenever we're considering a rezoning to a straight district. Or whenever we're considering a rezoning to a planned district. You are going to be acting in a legislative capacity. You're setting policy. Your planned districts are set up in a way. That you, you kind of do the, the one step planned district. Where you come in and, and rezone, do a map change to the planned district and. A development plan gets approved at the same time. And that's it. So that is going to be a legislative process.
And Pete, just so I can chime in for the newborn members and I guess Pete, for your sake too, it, the, as long as I've been here and before my time. I don't, we've never done a straight zoning change. So it seems to be that we've always leaned towards the planned districts. Which I think is a reason, an issue in our zoning resolution, but. I just wanted to share that with the new members too. So, sorry.
Yeah. So in, yeah, and that's.
Can you give, can you give a better or give a definition between this planned district and straight district? So just.
Yeah. So a straight, what we refer to as a straight district. And like your FR one, your farm residential district is considered a, a, what we call a straight district. Everything has to be. Everything is the same. You treat all this, the uses the same. In a straight district. Whereas in a planned district, obviously, as you guys know, there's a little wiggle room there. And, and you're, you know, you're, you're creating the plan for that particular, particular development. So when we refer to as a, a, a straight district, it's just your farm residential.
We don't have a lot.
Yeah, no, you don't. Your, your agriculture, your agricultural preservation district. But. Your industrial district, but anything with planned, obviously in front of it is, is a, is a PD. So. The important thing to remember though is when you're doing your PDs, because of the way we've set it up in our zoning resolution. You are always going to be acting in a legislative capacity because. You're doing a map amendment and then approving the development plan and then that's it. So there are other. The PD statute allows you to do a two-step process. And it's that second step where sometimes zoning commission are acting in an administrative capacity. Much like a BZA were. But you guys don't have to worry about that. So, so what does that? What does that mean? Why is that? Why is that important? And. It's important because it, when I'm acting in a legislative capacity, it means that my decisions. On rezonings are not subject to appeals. They're not, they're, they're not, there's no appeal, right? So a developer can't file a, a direct appeal to the court of common pleas. Up, up, up in the city of Delaware. There's no right of appeal. What there is, it means our decisions are going to be subject to referendum. But, but not on appeal. The second thing that it's going to tell me as a zoning commission member is, okay. I, I am, I'm acting as a legislator. I'm setting policies. It's going to tell me that. I'm allowed as an individual. To have. Direct communication. With. An applicant. Outside of. Here. Now, whether or not, so there's nothing legally wrong with doing that. I can't tell you that. You know, if, you know. Joe Smith is files a rezoning application and he wants to meet. With me as a zoning commission member to talk about the application. There's nothing that I can point to that says that you can't do that. All right. And, and, and the analogy that I use a lot of times is, you know, when the general assembly is writing. New laws, you know, I'll go down with Heidi at OTA sometimes and I'll sit and. In, in the legislator's office and I'll, I'll, I'll say, well, this is what I think we should do. I think this is how we should write it. I think this is why we should do this. There's, there's nothing that prohibits that. Now, you may as a mem, as a member, as a zoning commission member decide that. I just don't like that. Because I think it can, it can, it can cause a lot of issues. It can, it could, it, it could. A developer could throw me under the bus, you know, maybe we had a conversation and I liked the idea, but now as I'm hearing public comment. You know, I'm, I'm, I don't particularly agree with that. And, you know. I start questioning the applicant and, and he says, well, you know, hey Pete, remember when we met? You didn't have an issue with it then. So you may have your own individual. Preference. Legally, I can't tell you. That it's prohibited. I wouldn't recommend it just personally. I, I, you know, I just think things are hard these days. And there's a lot of political pressure on everybody to make the right decision. I'd rather be. You know, I'd rather hear the conversation. As, as it's happening during, in the hearing context. So you're, you're allowed to if you want to. Now, if you are acting in an administrative capacity, the answer is different. But since you're not going to be, we don't really need to get into that. The other thing, yeah, go ahead.
This is Adam eight, and that's just with the assumption that it's, it's one or two board members or, or not. Three or more. Yeah, okay.
Correct. So we can't obviously violate the sunshine law. We can't have. A quorum present. We can't have three members, but it certainly could be. Two members at, at a time. It could be one member, but a great point, Adam. Never three. Which kind of jumps right into my next point in that. Everything you do has to be as a body, has to be during an open meeting. You have no ability to go in executive session. You have no ability to deliberate privately. The merits of a potential application. Different answer if you're, if you're acting in an administrative capacity. But again, everything we're doing here in Orange Township is going to be a legislative. In a legislative context. So it's got to be on the record. We're subject to the sunshine law. No executive sessions, you know, three of us can't. You know, we can't recess for ten minutes and three of us can't go in the back room and start chatting about the application in front of us.
What, Pete, what if one zoning commission member wants to talk to staff about the application?
Perfect. That's fine. Yep, perfectly acceptable.
Yeah. And then for members, this is a public meeting tonight. So it's, it's streaming on our YouTube, but.
Yeah, there's, there's nothing wrong with that. And, and, and again. You're acting in a legislative capacity. So staff is your friend. And during a rezoning process, whereas sometimes when you're in the B, you know, with the BZA. The staff is actually considered an adverse party. And you shouldn't, you, you should not be talking to staff. But again, rezoning context. Staff is your friend. If you have questions, feel free to reach out or ask, you know. If you, if you're, if you recess and you want to talk to staff as an individual. And then come back on the, on the record, you're, you're free to do that. The other thing, and I'm, and we'll get into, we'll get into running the, running the hearing. Is that you're, believe it or not, you're. If you screw things up at the zoning commission level. And, and, and you don't do something or you say, oh man, we didn't do this formality. We didn't swear people in or. It's not a big deal. Because again, we're acting in a legislative capacity and we actually. Don't have the formalities, if you will. We don't have to check all the technical boxes. That we would be required to if we were. In an administrative context. So we'll get into what those are and what those mean. And we'll spend a lot of time on those. So that's what it means in terms of being in a legislative capacity versus an administrative capacity. One thing quick. Do we have rules of procedure?
I don't think, you mean like, would that be from bylaws or?
So the zone, yeah. So do, do we have the Orange Township Zoning Commission rules of procedure?
Let me look. Actually, I can probably pull it up.
If we don't, we need to. And I didn't notice it in your code. I can get you samples, done tons of them. But rules of procedure on how you operate, how you run meetings, what, you know, when special meetings can be called, when, you know. All those things need to be in the statute actually requires you to have rules of procedure. The one thing I want to mention about rules of procedure, and I think probably the most important thing is. It, it, how you deal with tie boats. So what happens if, if there's a two-two recommendation? What happens? I mean, I, I'm hoping we never have that situation because we have a full body, but. But you can address that in your, in your rules of procedure. So it, it, it just rules of procedures keeps things clean, they're pretty standard.
I think we have that for BZA, right?
You have it for BZA in your code.
Okay, yeah, not, not zoning commission.
Right. So something that we need to, to look at. And. You know, and it's up to you on what you want in them. I, I can give you, I can give you samples. That we've done. I know Liberty Township just updated their rules of. Zoning commission just updated their rules and procedure not too long ago.
Pete, do, do those have to go into the zoning resolution or is it going to be a separate document?
Nope, they're just a separate document. And my recommend, yeah, I know some places will put them in there, but I don't think the zoning resolution is an appropriate place for rules of procedure. It's just an independent document that the zoning commission would, would adopt. So. Five minutes on a comp plan. I know there's, there's been lots of discussion on what comprehensive plan. Is what it isn't, what it means, how should we consider it? So. With all due respect to planners. Right, I love players. But, but I'm an attorney. So my job is to tell you what a comp plan means from a legal perspective. And. A, a comp plan is just a guide. It's just a guide. It is something that you will look to, to help you make a decision. On whether or not to rezone a property a certain way. You in Orange Township are fortunate enough that you have a standalone. Comprehensive plan. So that checks a lot of boxes. But if something does not, if, if, let's just say if something. If a rezoning application does not meet the comp plan. It does not mean that you automatically have to recommend to not. Okay? It, it, it doesn't mean that. Things change. Now, what I will tell you that if. Your comp plan is up and updated and it provides for. You know, it provides for a, a plan in that area. And the application does not meet it. You should have, if, if you want to, if you want to deviate from that comp plan, you should be able to articulate. A reason why you're deviating from the comp plan. And maybe it's.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah. So I mean, sometimes it's a matter of. Utilities. Maybe when we wrote the comp plan, utilities weren't there. And now they're there. So maybe now we are, we can, we can move to a little more of a denser. Area. I'm trying to think off the top of my head, some other examples. Maybe. Things aren't developing the way that we thought they would. For a number of factors, it could be. It could be. Location. It could be desirability. And I'm, I'm trying to not, I, I don't want to give actual specific cases because I don't want to.
No, it's okay. I, I just, at least from, I maybe the zoning commission members have a little. To me, I feel like the zoning commission members have a lot more flexibility and how they take the comp plan, but.
They do.
I, I feel like staff, when they make the recommendations, and maybe this is the planner in me, Steve, Pete, sorry, but I. I, I typically make my recommendations off of what's outlined in the comp plan.
Yeah, and, and then that's perfect, right? Because you know, staff, you know, that's their. To me, that's staff's law. I mean, that's what they should be telling you is this is what our comp plan provides. But you as policymakers have the ability to deviate it. And what I would tell you is that. Look, our comp plan says X. And any developer worth their, with, worth a grain of salt. Is going to know that what they're, what they have in front of you. Is not matching up with your comp plan. And put the onus on the developer to make a, to justify why they. Should, why you should as a commission deviate from that. Cop plan. So I have another example. I got, and this, this is not central Ohio, so I feel a little more comfortable talking about it, but. I have a, a hundred. Close to two hundred acre parcel. And this area. Of the township, they just updated their comp plan about three years ago, four years ago. And on, they, they, they call it the equestrian corridor. And on the one side of the street, they have all these nice horse farms and there's trails and. On the other side. It used to be that way until a couple of proper owners sold and it was annexed to the, to, to a city. And they put in massive. Massive subdivisions on two sides of this. Two hundred acre parcel. Centralized utilities are there. This particular development provides for two, uh, uh, one. One unit per two acres. And it calls that it's the equestrian quarter. And it calls that it's the equestrian corridor. And the developers have come in and say, look, you know, we, we understand what your cop thing says, but we have utilities. It's been annexed on both sides. The density is one unit per acre on each side. Uh, we believe that things have changed enough from your cop plan to, in order to justify you to deviate from that cop plan. So that's the, that's the argument uh, that developers making in this particular township. So something like that would be another example as to why you may want to listen to, um, you know, listen to that, that argument. Um, and, and typically developers are going to start pointing to what you've allowed from a density perspective, um, to contiguous and adjoining properties i- as a rationale for deviation of, uh, from the comp plan. But again, the cop plan is nice, particularly if you're, if you're, um, if you lean on it and say, you know, I, I'm just going to be one of those people that, you know, I, this is the cop plan, it's been updated. And this is just not a good reason. Point to it, articulate, that's the reason why you're recommending denial or approval. Um, lean on that cop plan. Um, and there's, there's some cases in there, um, that we've worked on over the years. You could read through those. Um, I have in there, um, a little bit about updating the comp plan. Uh, just notice that there is no statutory process to update a cop plan. Um, it's, it's, I mean, you can basically do whatever you want to do. So I'm on page seven. Um, um, general welfare zoning, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of gonna skip over because I don't think it's really too critical. Uh, zoning amendments. Um, I don't really want to spend a lot of time on this. Um, other than to say that, and this is probably more critical for staff, but there's three ways um, that, um, property can be, uh, rezoned. It could be by motion of the zoning commission. Um, uh, resolution of the trustees can actually start the process or the filing of an application. So yes, the township has the ability to rezone property without consent of property. Um, I wouldn't recommend that they do that, but, um, I have on a couple of occasions seen it done. Um, but those are the three ways. So and that goes, um, with, both with, um, a rezoning. Uh, and then two ways in which text amendments can, can happen is it can be started by the zoning commission or it could be started by the trustees and sent down to the zoning commission. Um, in terms of your hearing, once an application is filed, um, it says that you have to hold a hearing within twen-, you know, uh, not less than 20, no, no more than 40 days. Uh, that doesn't mean that your hearing has to be done within that window. It just means you have to commence the hearing. So you're required to consider uh, Delaware County Regional Planning Commission's recommendation. So let's say, for instance, you don't have that recommendation yet. What you would do is open the hearing, can, um, continue the hearing uh, until you're able to receive that recommendation. Let's say that we have a lot of people and we just can't get to everything tonight. Um, nothing wrong with continuing the hearing. Uh, you can continue it to, uh, a time, date, place, certain, uh, and hold a special meeting. Or you can continue it to your next regularly scheduled, uh, zoning commission hearing. Doesn't have to be concluded, just has to be commenced.
Pete, what if the applicant submits and we, because we have a calendar, so when you submit, there is a certain date that it would be scheduled, um, which seems to work out pretty well here, but what, what, what if there's a case that the applicant submits and then a week later, they're like, hey, I don't think I can make that hearing. Can we push it back another week? And what if that week goes outside of the 40 days?
So, um, the practical side of me says that get it in writing.
Okay.
And I think if they're asking you to do it, I think it's okay.
Okay. That's what I do, but I wanted to.
Yep.
Make sure.
I don't necessarily like it. I mean, no, but, you know, um, we can live with it.
Okay.
Um, and, and, and the materials on, on seven and eight, um, and this is just predominantly for staff. Um, there is a checklist for legal notices. And this is like page eight. Um, page eight and a little bit of nine, there is a difference between a legal notice for a rezoning of less than 10, eight, 10 parcels. So if I have a rezoning of 10 parcels or less, paragraph C on page eight says, this is what has to be in my legal notice. Then there's a difference for a legal notice for a text amendment, uh, for updating the code. Or if, if I'm doing a rezoning of 10 or more parcels, uh, that's item D on eight and over on the nine, that's my checklist of what has to be in my legal notice. So, um, what I do, if I ever write legal notices, I mean, I hate writing them, but if I ever have to do it, I write it and then I check, I just go down sure and make sure I check those, those numbers off. Um, so your recommendation, say we're ready to go, your recommendation. There is nothing in the higher vice code that says your decision has to be in writing. Uh, so what I mean by that is that a, a oral motion, uh, is sufficient. You have the ability, you are required to make a recommendation of approval, do not denial or approval with some modification. You get three options. All right. It's got to be one of the, those three. And it's a simple majority vote.
Um, you call it conditional approval? Is that not the right language?
Technically, no. So what you would do is, um, I would call it, uh, uh, recommend approval subject to the following modifications.
Okay, I have to see, I'm.
And you list them out.
Yeah, I, I don't know, Jeff, if you recall, but I think I use conditional. I'll have to into that.
Yeah. So, so a lot of times regional planning will use that language.
Okay.
And, you know, and again, this is just a, this is just a nerd in me. I mean, you know, I, I like to use the word straight out of the statute. It uses the word approval with modification. So in essence, conditional conditions means kind of the same thing, but I, I always say, uh, zoning commission makes a recommendation of approval subject to the following modifications. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, you know, and just list them out.
Yeah.
Um, so then you make your recommendation. Then you get it to the trustees. And, and, and not that it's any of your worry at this point in time, but what's interesting is about the statute is that there is no timeframe as to when you are required as a zoning commission to give your recommendation to the trustees. It's, it's silent. The statute is silent. And some, some townships will play a game with this. Um, what I generally have, uh, clients do is, I mean, you can do kind of one or two things. You can just, um, get it to them as, as soon as possible. Um, and then the trustee that their next regularly scheduled meeting will, will receive the recommendation. Um, or, uh, some, some clients will wait until the meeting minutes are approved of the zoning commission and then send it up. Which, you know, you guys typically meet once a month, so that's a, that's a delay. Um, what I would tell you is just have an established practice and be consistent with that practice. But there is no, there's no timeframe. There's no statutory timeframe. You, you know, you don't have to get it up there within 10 days or 15 days. Um, just have an established practice and make sure you consistently follow it. If that makes sense.
Yeah, we do that. We do, your first option was we send it to the trustees and, and as soon as their next regular meeting is they, they see the recommendation and then they schedule the hearing. So, seems to.
And that's, and that's, and that's fine. That's fine. Um, so I'm gonna jump all the way to, um, page 11, conducting the rezoning here. And, um, you know, we've already talked about the difference between administrative and legislative. And, um, you know, the good news is, if you will, that you guys have it very easy. It's, it's legislative. So you don't have to worry about, am I acting in an administrative capacity? Because that's when things get hyper technical. So legislative. Um, time limits on speakers. Yes, they're okay. They're okay. Be, why? Because I'm acting in a legislative capacity. Um, whereas if I'm in an administrative capacity, people have the ability to appeal my decision directly to the court. And there's a statute that says that I have to afford those people who can appeal my decision, the ability to provide all evidence. Right? We don't have to worry about that. So I am able to, as a zoning commission, to limit the time that people speak. Um, so what I typically see is that, and I know it kind of stinks. I, I guess it depends on who you, you know, with where you're sitting from. But I typically have, you know, order of presentation is typically, I always have, you know, you, you call the meeting order. You establish the ground rules. So things like, um, you know, am I going to put time limits in? Um, it's certainly acceptable. I've seen two minutes. I've seen three minutes. I've seen five minutes. I've seen no limits. Um, and I think it's going to depend upon how many people you feel you are going to have speaking that night. And you can certainly vary from one meeting to the next. You know, the other night in Liberty, we did, we did three minutes. Um, you have the ability, believe it or not, to limit the number of people speaking for or against an application. Now, I don't do that. I don't, I, I don't recommend that. I'm, I'm a firm believer in, in township government is the, the thing that makes township government great is that we can come and we can bitch and complain of our officials, uh, and they're going to listen to us. But if you go down to the city of Columbus, three people for, three people against, three minutes each. If you're the fourth person for or against, too bad. But that's the city and we don't want to be a city. Um, it, it's okay to do, would recommend doing it, but you, 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 you can do it if you want, but you certainly have the ability and I highly recommend that you do not let people speak, um, as long as they want to. Cause it just makes it awkward, right?
Yeah.
At some point in time, because people will take, I mean, I had a guy one time walk in and he had, uh, it looked like, it looked like your zoning resolution. And he says, I prepared written comment tonight. And he started reading. If you've ever watched C, C-SPAN and you see those, those folks filibuster, that's exactly what he was doing. Um, so, but I, I think as long as you treat everybody equally and you set the rules of the game up, um, right up front, uh, it's, it's acceptable.
Pete, can we talk, so I guess for the board members, uh, we are going to attempt to do the time limitations, um, for the North Farms meeting, um, coming up soon. Um, but Pete, can you touch on what if a resident say they'd finished their three minute time? I, we have, and I'm not, I'm not blaming anybody specifically, but in past meetings, we have, we've had these issues or maybe, I don't know if it, I'm trying to think of a better word, but this back and forth dialogue.
Right.
Somebody speaks, this co- commission member or staff response, or anybody, somebody responds to it. And then, you know, it's like this back and forth. And then of course their time exceeds. So how, how would you?
Right. So, yeah, so my recommendation, and, and again, these are, you know, if you only have, have a few people there, I, I think you can, you may be able to get to that dialogue, but yeah, but my recommendation is it's, it's not really a dialogue, right? It's there, they're, they're showing up and they're, they're, they're telling you why you should, why you should either approve or deny the policy decision. Um, uh, because of, you know, potentially traffic, because of density or environmental issues or uh, the cop plan, um, it's their chance to tell you why you should vote no. It's not to ask questions uh, of you as a zoning commission. It's not to ask questions of the applicant, to be quite honest with you. I mean, if, if they want to ask the question, um, you know, they can ask it, but we, you know, we're, we're not gonna, you know, we're not going to respond to it. Um, now if the applicant as part of rebuttal wants to respond to it, maybe it's appropriate. But, but in order to get through all the comment, it should be a, a, a question and, and, and answer between a resident and, um, the zoning commission or the applicant. That, that, that's when things start to, in my opinion, to unravel. Um, so it's, and again, that needs to be stated upfront. That it's not a dialogue. You need to give and voice your, uh, opposition or, uh, support for the application and the reasons why.
So who would, um, I guess, who would be like taking lead on that? Would you recommend the zoning commission and chair stating that upfront, hey, three minutes, no more? And then there, it'll be rebuttal at the end?
Yeah, yeah, typically. So, oh, yeah, and it typically falls on the chair, um, to, to set the ground rules. Um, so, yeah, and it's, um, and, and, you know, and, and maybe even having a little something scripted out ahead of time that, you know, um, would help Adam just kind of read it. And that way it just takes the, the, the guesswork out of it.
Yeah.
Um, um, but yeah, so it's usually staff, uh, applicant, proponent, opponent, rebuttal, back to the board, back to the commission. And, um, when it comes back to the commission, at that point in time, you know, public comment is really over. It's, it's really an opportunity to, you know, for the commission to really delve into the detail and start, you know, start the question and answer if, if need be with the applicant. Um, and, um, but yeah, the, 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 the back and forth dialogue, it just starts to get unreal, uh, uh, it just starts to unwind the meeting and it just bogs things down and, um, so I'm, I'm not a proponent of that legally. There's nothing wrong with that, but, but again, I think we need to be looking at how we can hear everybody's comment and how do we run, uh, an efficient meeting? Uh, so that's just, you know, again, that's just 18 years of, of, of doing this and and, 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 you know, my recommendation, but certainly if the zoning commission doesn't want to do it that way, that's, that's up to them.
So, so just to be clear on that, it, you, you, you know, with, with, uh, the public comment, you know, basically, you know, we, I, I guess in the past, what we've tried to do is especially in these, in these high profile cases, you know, we, we allow everybody to kind of speak. Um, we, we state, you know, obviously no repetitive comments. If, if someone already made the comment, you know, please don't come up and make the same comment and, you know, add to it or say, you know, whatever. But basically, um, I, I see, and, and maybe, maybe I'm, I'm misinterpreting this part, but I see that as completely separate and I agree with that. But with, with the applicant themselves, there is, there is parts where there, there is back and forth dialogue where I think maybe necessary, but you know, and that's a separate, a whole separate thing, is it? But are you saying even with the applicant, it's kind of, hey?
No.
Okay, okay, great. All right.
No, 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 no. I think that's appropriate and, 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 you know, and I have, I have boards that will do it both ways. So some will basically right after the applicant speaks, if the zoning commission wants to start peppering questions of the applicant and having a dialogue with the applicant, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Okay. But what I don't want is for a resident to stand up during their three minutes. Okay. But what I don't want is for a resident to stand up during their three minutes and start asking questions of the applicant, then the applicant coming to the podium and then the zoning commission asking questions. That's where I think things start getting bogged down.
Agreed. Yeah. No, I agree. And Michelle, is that kind of what you were saying too? Or do, are you, when you were referencing those times where it's, it's been this back and forth dialogue? Was that is with the applicant as well? Or were you just meaning public comment?
I, I was just meaning for the public.
Okay, okay. All right.
So we're on the same page. Yep. And it's, I, I listened to Liberty Township meeting, not the six hour one that happened last week, but another. But they actually have a timer and you can, you can hear it going off. So, um.
Yeah. And I usually let, I mean, kind of, you know, you, you kind of let them finish the thought.
Yeah.
So years ago, when I worked in the, worked in the senate, I had an, an old farmer that bought it, brought in a huge egg timer. And he put it to the five minutes and then he let that thing ring so loud and then he cut your microphone off. And you could be making the world's greatest point. It didn't matter. Once that timer went off, it, it was done. But, but yeah, I, we usually let people finish their, their train of thought and then it's a thank you. And, you know, we are in the world of Zoom. So I, I think whoever's controlling Zoom just needs to mute them to move on. And just, you know, thank you for your comments. Um, we're calling, uh, Pete Griggs next, next. He's next on the list. So, um, that's what I would do. Swearing in of, 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 of residents. Do you guys do that?
Uh, we, we recently started to, so, um, Adam reads off, I mean, this has been Zoom this past year. So Adam reads off, um, a swearing in statement and then, um, they have to state their name and address. Or, or if they do like a, we were doing chats and the chat comments too. Pete, I don't know if you want to touch on that a little bit, but, um,
Yeah.
we, we are doing that, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Yeah. So let's start with swearing in. Um, when you think about holding up your right hand and swearing, swearing to tell the truth and the actual truth and nothing but the truth, and then you actually listen to what the people say. Everything they, they're commenting on is speculation. It's pure speculation on their, on their part. And there is not one shred of, of, of concrete evidence, um, that they're providing. Right? Because remember what we're doing is a, we're making a policy decision. So I don't disagree that you need to swear people in because it kind of lends itself to some formality. But if you don't, not a big deal. Okay. Now, different answer if you're the BZA.
Yeah.
Right? Because there's a statute that says that all testimony has to be provided under oath. So not a big deal. But it does kind of lend itself to some formality, but, um, if you don't do it, it's, there's nothing wrong with it, not doing it, just so you know. Okay? You're not required to issue findings of facts and conclusions of law. You're not required to allow, we kind of already went over this, that, the, the cross examination or the dialogue back, you know, between, uh, adjacent property owners and the applicant. You don't have to worry about any of that, um, because you are engaged in a policymaking decision.
So Pete, do we have to worry about getting the resident's name and address for their comments?
Um, not necessarily. No. I mean, you don't, you don't have to, but, um, I mean, I would, I mean, you know, I think it helps with meeting minutes, identifying people for meeting minutes.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's helpful, but I didn't know if we were.
No, I mean, if, if you don't, I mean, I've had, you know, I've had some meetings where they, the, we've gone back and listened to the audio and they can't make out person's name and address. And they just put a resident testified or a resident commented. I mean, it's not, it's not fatal. You don't have to, you don't have to do that if you don't want to.
Okay.
Is the, um, with respect to the address, you know, in this world today, but, um, is it just acceptable if they just affirm they, that they reside within the township versus necessarily giving an address?
Uh, Les, great point. I've had, I've had people just say that, you know, acknowledging your township resident is sufficient. Yeah. Yeah. I mean, that's what makes it nice is we don't have to, you, you don't have to dot all these i's and cross these t's. As you would if you're acting in a, in an administrative quasi judicial capacity. It's all legislative. So, um, if you don't get it down or you miss somebody or somebody doesn't affirm that they were under oath, it's not a big deal. But Les, I've had clients that have done that. Again, multiple meetings, um, it's okay. I think we touched upon that. So two things, there's a difference between tabling and continuing. Tabling means that the applicant has basically said, look, I don't know when I'm gonna be able to proceed again. We gotta go back and we gotta rework anything, everything. So they asked it to be tabled. All right. Continuing means that we basically run out of time and we're continuing something to a time, date, place certain. And we know when we're going to hold that next or we're going to, we're going to recommence the hearing. We know the exact time, date, place that that's going to happen. Under that scenario, we're not required to re-advertise and, and, and follow all those formalities. So there's a difference, uh, between tabling and continuing, just so you know. Cop plan or appropriate considerations. Cop plan. Obviously we've, we've talked about that. Other plans and factors. You know, I'm thinking, um, if, uh, you know, thoroughfare plans. And I don't know you guys quite well enough yet, but I've got clients that have like scenic byway designations. If there's utility plans, uh, other factors, um, that may come into play to, you know, justify your decision in addition to the cop plan or may lead you to deviate from that cop plan. Testimony. Again, most of what everybody's saying is speculative. It's not, it, it, it's, it's not real. Two big things we always hear, schools, traffic. Schools are never a appropriate consider, consideration for rezoning. All right. People are going to want to say, we don't want overcrowded schools. Don't base your decision on schools. Right? We all love and, and, and Oltangi has a tremendous school district and that's why people want to come here and, and, and move there. But that's not a, it's not a, a, a reason to base your, uh, rezoning decision. Okay? Traffic, uh, is an appropriate consideration. And there's a memo in there that we've done years ago. That you can, you can read. I, I wouldn't base, I wouldn't base my, my decision solely on traffic. I think traffic can't, traffic definitely plays a role, but I, I, I want to include other reasons why in addition to traffic. Need for a, a particular use or competition? Not a valid reason. So if our code is set up, uh, and is allowed for permitted uses within a district and I'm rezoning to that, and I don't, I, 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 I don't want to base my decision that I don't want another gas station. Or I don't want another grocery store or I don't want another coffee shop. That's not, that's not an appropriate consideration. Okay? You, you, you probably get sued and you probably lose that. Uh, environmental protections, absolutely, is, is, is another, um, you know, groundwater, I had a, rezoning and one of the huge factors was that it was part of the development was on an old landfill. And there was just a lot of cons, a lot of environmental concerns and that was, uh, a reason for the recommendation of denial and that's okay. Again, um, motions enough. Articulate a reason why. So everybody's done. Uh, it's back to the board, uh, back to the commission. And, um, you know, you're, you're talking about things you like, you don't like, concerns. You know, somebody puts a motion, a motion to recommend denial. Then there needs to be, you need to articulate why you're voting the way you vote. So.
Pete?
Yeah.
Uh, quick question, just going back to the, well, I guess even the environmental protections as, as an example. So say that, that a developer comes in and is, and is developing, because this kind of comes up and not this particular situation, but it, it has come up before. Um, and I don't know if it's, if it's okay to ask for this or not, but using that as an example, say that historically, we knew that at one time, a long time ago, there was a gas station or something at that location and, and was demolished, you know, thirty, forty years ago. And there's some concerns that maybe the, the soils are contaminated. If we were to, if we were to say, look, we have some concerns of the, the, the condition of the site or something. I, I, we can't require, but can we, can we request, like, can you do a phase one or phase two, uh, soil test or something that, that would maybe indicate if, if there is, if that is the case? So, uh, same with like geo, geotechnical, let's say, I mean, if, if there was like, we, we know that there was, there was a lot of stuff underground there or a tunnel or, or a mine or whatever, you know, something like that.
Correct.
Rather than requiring it, but saying, hey, is there any way you could do geotech to make sure that there is not, you know, is that something that, that we can suggest?
Yes.
Require?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely. And, and what I would tell you is that if you have a good developer in front of you, they, they should already know that information.
Okay. Yeah. Cause you know, our code obviously doesn't say you need to do those things, but if, if there's concerns about it, you know, it, I don't know what, what we can and can't say as far as we.
Yeah, there's something, the information that you want that will help you make your policy decision, then I think, you know, for the most part, you ask for it. And like I said.
What about like a, what about like a traffic impact study, like a full, like, cause that becomes, that's become an argument in the past with applicants. So.
Yeah, I knew you were going to ask me that question, Michelle.
Sorry.
That'd be more appropriate.
You know, I have mixed feelings on that and I've seen it both ways, but I would say for the most part, does, does our code, and forgive me because I don't know the answer to this, um, does our code require a traffic study?
Um, only for the overlay district.
Okay. So what I would, what I would tell you is ask if one has been done or do they have any information? But I would not hold up the approval, uh, particularly in, in, in your township, because you have a really stingy engineer. He was gonna dot those i's and cross those t's at the end. And if it's something we want to see, then I think we probably would, would want to amend our, our code requirement. I, I've had it the other way where I've had townships and it, it, sometimes it gets to the point where nothing can get through or nothing can get done. Uh, and that's my, that's my concern on that. So my preference is that if it's not in our code, let, you know, that, and they haven't done one yet, that we, we, I don't know. A lot of this, and particularly since everything is a PD, it's kind of, it's a game of poker, if you will. And that, that, that's in reality and, and and not knowing you guys well enough yet, um, I don't know how hard you want to push for that. I can certainly justify it, but I just don't know from a policy perspective and a procedural perspective, if that's something you've pushed hard for in the past, it's something you want to see. But if it's something you want to see, I would, I would, I would amend your code. And developers aren't going to like that, right? Because they're going to have to, they're going to have to come in and it's expensive. And they're going to have to undertake that. And then they're not, they don't know whether or not you're going to approve it.
Right.
So, um.
Christine, were you to say something? So I'm sorry.
Um, not with the traffic study, but more about what Adam was talking about. We've had developers who've wanted to come in and, you know, like bury creeks, um, and turn them into like culverts. Or we've had developers who've wanted to either do away with retention ponds or re-engineer existing retention ponds on properties. And what can we ask for in terms of that type of site modification? Uh, where they're like, oh, we don't need all that retention pond. We're going to put units on top of, you know, that land. Um, and it feels like in the past, all we could say is give them a warning and depend upon the county engineer and the, and those guys to enforce, proper, you know, drainage and things like that.
Yeah. I mean, I think in, in terms of, of.
I guess I'm saying, what can we do? Or is there?
Yeah, I mean, I would.
Years are going to protect us.
Right. I mean, and that's, you know, that's part of the problem is, you know, what comes first, the egg or the chicken? And, and, you know, I, 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 you know, if, if you have serious concerns, I would push hard.
Okay.
And I would want something in writing from, um, the, the engineer saying that they don't have an issue with it. Push back.
Okay. Yeah, I've, we've tried in the past, but we're never quite sure. Like you say, it's a poker game. How far can you push?
Yeah. Well, you know, um, for the most part, I think most developers, um, again, you, you guys are one of those destination places where people want to develop in. And it, it's going to have to take something pretty egregious for them to want to sour the relationship, in my opinion. So. So yeah, if, if we have a, you know, I wouldn't do it just to be a pain in the rear end, but if we have legitimate reason, to want this, to, to know if that's appropriate or not, then, then ask for the, ask for the information. I mean, we asked for it from the fire department. Can you access, you know, can you access this development? You know, same thing.
You know, on the, on the traffic study component, is that something that can be one of those, the, the, the conditional approval or other, I know that's not the term we're using, but.
Yeah. I mean, that, that is, yeah, that's dangerous.
Okay.
Only because I, I don't know what that really means. It's approved, but, but subject to a, a, a traffic study. And, and that's where I think it gets, that's, that's the hard part. I don't know if you guys have made that recommend, uh, uh, condition or, uh, modification in the past. Michelle or?
I don't think so, but I'm, I'm thinking maybe, maybe the approach is that we would want the trustees to see it before they made the decision. But I, I, I don't think we've done that, but who knows?
Yeah. And, and I've, and I've, I've, I've run into that situation a couple of times and it's really kind of held everything up.
Yeah.
And, um, because there are some times and there are some, and I'm not, again, I'm not saying this is the Delaware County Engineers Office. But there are some county engineers where I've had traffic impact studies sit for years because they don't have the staff to get to. So what, what, what do you do?
Yeah.
So that's why it's, you know, that's why I think that conditioning, the rezoning on that is a little sketchy. And that's why, you know, if you want to require that as part of your, you know, rezoning upfront, you know, that's, again, that's a policy decision, the, a big picture decision that I think you'd need to consider as part of a testament. Yep. And that's where I have kind of beware of conditions there. It's never appropriate in the straight district. You can't do it, but in a PD, yeah. You could, but I think what happens is it ultimately bogs everything down and it could be years before anything gets done. So, um, so that's, um, that's just kind of conducting the hearing and I'm, again, I'm going way over and I, I apologize. I'm going to end it real quick with ethics. I'm gonna end it real quick with ethics. And you just know that you're subject to the high ethics laws, so if you screw up, you can go to jail. You can be fined. They, they probably didn't tell you that when they, when they asked you to volunteer. So here's the, here, here's, here's it in a nutshell. I can't use my position. That would secure uh, a thing of benefit or detriment to myself. My family or my, or my business associates. I can't use the, my position uh, to, that would render a direct benefit or detriment to myself, my family, or my business associates. So family means parents, my kids, grandparents, siblings, or anybody that resides in my household. Okay, parents, kids, grandparents, siblings, or anybody else that resides in my household. Business associate would be, uh, you know, if I'm in, if I have an LLC with somebody. Uh, and they're, they're in front of me, uh, and they're rezoning property, can't. They're, they're a business associate. So you, you, you have to recuse yourself, and, and what I mean, recuse yourself, that means you don't sit in the meetings, you don't. Um, uh, talk to your other members about it, you certainly can't vote. Where we see the issue typically come up is the benefit or detriment to myself. And when I own property in the town, how close does an application have to be to me in order to, uh, have the potential to render a direct benefit or detriment to me? And what the zoning, uh, so the Ethics Commission has basically said is that if I'm contiguous or adjacent, I have a, I have a conflict. And I have to recuse myself. So contiguous or adjacent, but there's an or, there's always an or. Or nearby. Well, what the heck does nearby mean? Uh, the only written opinion that we have from the Ethics Commission says a hundred fifty feet or less. So contiguous, adjacent, or I with them, or if I'm within a hundred fifty feet. I know for a matter of fact that I have to recuse myself. Now, what if I'm a hundred fifty-five feet? Well, I don't know, right? Because the only defense to an ethics complaint is a written formal opinion. So if you think you have a, a, uh, ethics issue. Or you have a resident that says, Pete, you you have an ethics issue, you can't hear this, you should recuse yourself. And that happens all the time. What I would do is I would get in touch with staff. Talk to them about it. They can get ahold of me, we can chat about it, or you can always call, I provided a, a hotline number with the Ethics Commission. And that, that phone number is actually staffed by their attorneys. You don't have to give your name. Um, don't tell them that it's already happened, right? They're, they're not gonna, they're not gonna say. They're not gonna advise you on something that's already happened and, and potential violation of the ethics laws, it's all prospective. But I could say, hey, I'm, I'm, I'm Pete Griggs, I'm a zoning commission member in a, a township, and this is my facts. They'll give you, they'll give you a, a, an informal opinion on whether you can participate. Um, did that up with the outlet malls at Berkshire Township. And, uh, one of the trustees at the time had a very large, um, farm about a half mile down the road from where the outlet mall was going, and they actually gave an opinion that it could go either way. And they, they recommended that he recuse himself. So, um, you know, you have that ability, but know that you're subject to, know if you're contiguous or adjacent. You're, you're done, or within a hundred fifty feet. You gotta recuse yourself. If it's outside of that, and, and, you know, you kind of use the smell test, if something doesn't smell right, get ahold of Michelle. And, and we can help you out. Okay?
I, I have a couple questions about that.
I didn't know what it was, I just put it up there with the pictures.
Oh. Uh, so Pete.
Yeah.
You know, I, I, I'm sure Christine would probably agree with this, you know, in the, in the architectural world. Uh, i- i- it is a small community in, in one sense, and, and there's a lot of, uh, you know, people that, that you, you run into again. So say it was a former coworker or friend, I mean, someone you used to work with or something like that. They're coming in representing an applicant and, and they're, they're speaking on their behalf. That's not something that you would need, just because you know uh, someone that's, that's either representing or even the applicant, because you, you, you're not necessarily working with them, but maybe in, in a, in a previous job or, or even, you know, you worked with them at one time or something like that.
Like, a lot of times, like landscape architects or civil engineers.
Right.
Worked with one on a project two years ago.
Yeah.
And now they're representing the client on this current project before our township. Even though when I worked with them, it was, you know, five years ago in the city of Columbus on whatever project.
You are fine.
Well, out there in central.
Yeah. No, I, I agree with you, and you're absolutely fine.
Okay.
There, that's not a, that's not a legal conflict of interest, and, and in fact. Um, it's not, i- if you, let's say I'm an, an architect, and I had done work previously for on a, for a particular developer. What I want you to do, and then that developer is now in front of you on something that you've never worked on before. Um, what I want you to do is I want you to call Michelle, and then we can talk about it, but generally speaking, that's not a conflict of interest. Now, if you're on retainer, and, you know, um, you're, you're the go-to architect for this developer, and you pretty much do every project. Different answer.
Yeah.
But, but if you have worked on a project in the past. Um, that's not this project, and it's, you know, kind of a one-off, or it's not a reoccurring uh, engagement, you're okay.
Okay.
Yep. And then you can't take bribes, so. But, um, so yeah, I know we've gone like an hour and, and forty minutes, but that's just kind of the I, I've thrown a ton of information at you tonight, and, you know, we'll, we'll, you know, when time allows, we'll do follow-ups and get more specific. And, and, or if, you know, you have things that you wanna, you know, say, hey, we would like some training on this. Um, you know, again, this is something that, you know, it's a service we provide to our clients, and, you know, we'd be happy to, happy to do that.
I have a question, if I may. Part of the conflict of interest and ethical considerations on like page thirteen. You brought up trustees attendance at zoning commission hearings and vice versa.
Yeah, this.
Sometimes the trustees come to what could be a contentious zoning hearing, knowing that it's going to someday appear before their desk. And then sometimes, um, commission members, when that is being heard by the trustees, will show up at the trustee meeting to see, I'll be honest, whether or not the developer is badmouthing you or telling you, you know, what really happened in the meeting.
Right, so this is probably like one of my least favorite topics.
Well, it happens, Pete.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, 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 so.
Helpful.
It happens all the time, and what I can tell you is that there is nothing in, in, in the Higher Vice Code, in, in particularly five nineteen. Uh, because remember, we're engaged in a legislative process that prohibits either one of those things from happening. Okay? However. My recommendation is that you leave each other alone. And you potentially open yourself up to some type of, of, of argument that you need to recuse yourself because you are now biased, particularly the trustees coming down. Um, you are now biased. Um, because you're receiving information outside of your statutory hearing. In the statutory process, and I've, I've had that argument made by developers who have a lot of money, who hire very expensive attorneys. Um, so my point is that I don't recommend that you do that. You each get a bite at the apple. You each need to wait your turn, and when you're done with your turn, leave the other one alone. Right? Because how do I know if I send it up to the trustees? And I'm Pete Griggs, zoning commission member, and I'm saying, well, the zoning commission said, you know, thought this, and I thought that, and this happened. And put it in your recommendation. And then you vote on it. And then you send it up. And that recommendation speaks for the entire board. Don't be up there representing um, uh, what may or may not have been said. Um, and you certainly don't speak on behalf of the zoning commission, right? Your recommendation speaks on behalf.
Could staff say anything?
Um, yeah, I mean, I don't have a, I don't have a problem. I mean, if, you know.
Cause I've gone, you know, because the trustees, and then when, when we get to the trustee hearing, you know, sometimes they'll ask me if the zoning commission discussed this, did the zoning commission bring this up? You know, it wasn't necessarily outlined in the recommendation, but there was a conversation, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that, but I think you guys, the zoning commission is, is the entity that uh, uh, has to do all the dirty work, and has really got to vet the application. And, and, and be thorough, and make a thorough recommendation, and then send it up, right? You've done your job. Um, I just think it, I don't know, it should, then this is just a personal opinion, right? I just think it muddies the water. And, um, you are, at the end of the day, just a recommending body. And it's gonna be viewed as putting political pressure if you show up on the trustees. And that's when the tension starts to exist, and it, you know, I just, I don't like seeing that, that the process break down. Um, do your dirty work, make a good solid recommendation, make a thorough recommendation, and send it up. And you're done. And I'll certainly tell the trustees the same thing. You should not be down at the zoning commission level. Um, trying to influence the zoning commission recommendation. You'll have your time. You stay away, right? They're gonna do their job, they're gonna send it up, and then within that hearing context, that's when you get your opportunity to make your decision. Cause otherwise, all, all you're doing is allowing a developer and a developer's attorney to muddy the waters and complicate things. And let's, let's make the focus on the merits of the application and not whether or not somebody's biased or not, or whether we didn't follow some procedure.
So I was gonna say, it might be important to make sure then that we've approved the meeting minutes, especially for a controversial decision, and that the trustees have time to review them, so they know what our thought process was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, some time from the past, we haven't always been able to promptly, um, approve those minutes. Um, it puts more hardship on everyone, but.
Yeah, I, I, well, and Christine, I, I have talked, talked to Cindy about, you know, sometimes meetings that we think become more of a priority. So we, we let her know, and they do come out sooner, so, um, especially with the overlay applications, since it's a quick turnaround. Uh, we've had her take, take priority in doing those, so I'll try to keep note of that too, from the more controversial meetings. Pete, I have one more scenario for that. If, um, what if, what if one of the zoning commission members wanted to recuse themselves because they felt like they had a conflict of interest? And they wanted to act as a very, um, upset resident, I guess.
No. No.
No.
So, for, yeah, no, I mean, so first of all, so first of all, you either have a conflict or you don't. Right? And, and it's, and, and I am not a fan of, of somebody deciding whether they have a legal conflict or not. Now, they, they may have a, a moral issue, but you're there to do a job, you were appointed there to do a job. Um, you either have a legal conflict or you don't.
Well, Pete, let me, let me reiterate that, maybe I don't, if, if they have a legal conflict of interest. And they wanna, they've decided, can they, they wanna go watch the meeting, and they want, no, okay.
I would, and so again, so you, you, one, once you have a legal conflict of interest, you're required, you are unable to participate. Participate is pretty broad, so don't show up. Um, don't talk to your other commission members or other trustees. Just leave it alone. I mean, uh, imagine if I'm, and, and I'm a zoning commission chair. And I have a conflict of interest, and, um, we're, the zoning commission is hearing a controversial application, and I'm standing in the back with my arms crossed. And the developer's talking, and I'm shaking my head to, to all my zoning commission members, and going like this, you know, and um, so. You, you know, if you have multiple applications on, when you're done with what you can participate in, get up, recuse yourself, and leave the meeting. And that's it. Don't show up anywhere else.
Okay.
So Pete, would that also apply to be on the applicant's behalf? Well, for instance, okay, so I, I, I work with a, a developer, and, and just recently, they're, they're working on a, now I would not, I, I don't want, I represent them on other, uh, locations and, and go to these meetings for them. Um, and, and in this particular case, it is in Lewis Center in Orange Township.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not planning on, I'm obviously gonna recu- recuse myself from the zoning board when this application goes through, but I'm I, I'm trying to get out of not even, I don't even wanna be there as, as, as representative of the applicant, uh, for this particular case. Now, how, how, is there anything, because this last section here that says, you know, representative of a, of a present or former public official or employee. There's some language in there that sounds like it's, it's maybe speaking to this, or maybe I'm, I'm making it applied to it, but it just sounds like altogether, it's just, if it could be avoided, just avoid it, correct?
Correct, and that's not exactly what, um, that doesn't apply to the situation that, what you're talking about, but yeah, that one, I, I don't participate at all, on, on any level.
But, but, i- i- not that I would, but it, but legally, I, I could technically sit down with the applicant?
Um. I'm gonna, I'm gonna punt on that one, and I'm gonna ask, um, uh, Jen Huber of our office, uh, who's an attorney who does a lot of this with me. She just looked at a very similar circumstance for another client, and I don't know what her answer was.
Okay.
Oh, and she's on vacation this week, lucky her. Um, I will, I will speak with her, and then I'll, I'll let, uh, I'll get the answer to Michelle, and she can let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Well, as we always say, if it's a gray area, then it's a legal issue.
That's what we were saying. That's a good point, Rick.
Well, and, okay, I guess I do have one last scenario, and Jeff might chuckle at this. Um, but what if it's a BZA member that was very? It's okay, okay.
But, but, but they need to identify themselves as uh, Pete Griggs, uh, township resident, you know, I live at one, 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 Orange Road, East Orange Road. Um, they do, it's not appropriate for them to identify them, identify themselves as Pete Griggs, Orange Township BZA member.
Okay.
What if they, what if they do?
Well.
Um, yeah, we can talk about that, I don't, yeah, I mean, um.
I mean, and vice versa, if a zoning commission member goes to the BZA hearing and says that too.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's potentially, you know, I think you, whether it rises to a level of um, cause for removal, um, I've, I've not seen that, but I think that's where you're starting to tread into that water.
Yeah.
That's when I think the training will help that, because I think, I don't think that, I don't know if most of them would do it intentionally, but they might accidentally say it. And to go on that, what if, like, zoning commission member that recuses themselves, what if they send uh, their concerns in writing, like if they email Michelle or I and say, well, I have these concerns on this application, but they're not sitting in on the application, and they're not coming to the public hearing, are they allowed to give written comments if they're concerned with it?
So I'm a, so I'm a, I'm a zoning commission member, and I'm not sitting in on the hearing.
Right, you recused yourself from it, because you have the issue, you don't.
So, yeah, so if I'm recusing myself, it means I have a legal. So, yeah, so if I'm recusing myself, it means I have a legal conflict of interest, and I send a letter in. That's participating, and that's a violation of ethics laws.
What about if you're an alternate member? So you're not sitting on, you're not actually sitting on that case, but.
Again, I think if that is a little bit different, if I'm not participating in on it. And I think what I've done is, you know, I won't be able to if they need me. I I think as long as they're identifying themselves as an individual, I don't think that's a. It's a legal conflict of interest. You know what? I'm gonna I'm gonna say that I've never had that situation, but the more I'm thinking about it. I think that could be an issue.
So let me read, because that has, we've done that.
Basically, what you're saying is by being on the zoning commission or the BZA, we cannot participate in the public process.
Well, and and so this is what I'm going to do. I'm going to forward you a a.
Because we've had these questions. I mean, it's not like.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. They're all good questions.
Twenty years or whatever.
Yeah, they're they're very, they're very good questions, and there is a, there is a fact sheet that the High Ethics Committee, I should have provided it. There's a fact sheet that the High Ethics Commission puts out that describes when you can and can't. Participate as a resident of the township. So. And, you know, you can certainly, you know, just because I'm a zoning commission member, doesn't mean that I can't rezone my property. Right? So if I want to rezone my property, I I have that right as a resident to seek out. You know, a rezone. So I I want to get that to you as well. You know, I. Go ahead, Michelle.
I guess I thought I only had one scenario, but now I keep thinking of things. So what if, and Christine, I'm going to put you on the spot a little bit, if that's okay, but what if Christine can't make it to a hearing? And we ask Rick to be an alternate, for instance, but since Christine has, you know, she's one of the more knowledgeable. More experienced zoning commission members, and she had comments, could we take those into consideration? I don't know if it necessarily changed the recommendation, but it would just address some of the technical things we noticed.
Yeah, so you can.
Yeah, I couldn't attend the meeting because I had a conflict of interest with another meeting. So I was like. And we have it where if you attend the first meeting, you are for the whole course reviewing the project. So I did recuse myself for legal meeting.
Right. Right. So what I would tell you is that there's no. There's nothing in the ORC that says that. If an alternate sits, that they have to follow through with the entire application. That's sound, that's a policy decision that you've made. What I tell people, what the case law has said is that. An author, an alternate can sit. For one meeting only, then be done, and then the the regular member can come back as long as they familiarize themselves with the record. That is okay. It's okay to do that. I I've not seen, I've not seen a, the situation that you've described. Where you have a zoning commission member that's not participating, but is providing written comments as a. As a member, but they're just not participating. I I would, I would frown upon that.
Okay.
And the only reason being is that you're not. You're not, you're not acting as a zoning commission member.
Yeah, the only reason why I submitted comments is, I'll be honest, I was asked to.
Yeah, no. But I but I think there's ways around that, is what I'm telling you.
That's definitely on staff, Christine. I didn't.
Now, I might have done some of the other things, like I was on the BZA, and I attended a zoning commission meeting, and or vice versa.
Yeah, well, I mean. Well, and again, and and maybe we, maybe we designate forty-five minutes sometime here in the future. And just do ethics issues, and we can delve in a little bit quicker. But again, just because you're on the BZA doesn't mean you can't come testify, right? At a zoning commission meeting, I I think you can. You just, I just want to make sure you're not identifying, trying to use the authority or influence of your office, right? At that point, it's it's Christine average as average resident. So that's that's my point. But I don't want you to, I don't want you to be, since you're not hearing the application. I I don't want the zoning commission to rely upon really outside information. From a zoning commission member at that point in time. I want it to be based upon those that are sitting. But there's no requirement that that alternate sit for everyone. So you could, you could come back, and then you could have your handy-dandy comments and say, here you go.
Thank you.
Well, I know the time is getting late. Does anybody else have any questions? Or and if you don't, and if you think of something later, feel free to forward them on, and I can discuss them with Pete, too.
But I appreciate you, everybody having me. And, you know, like I said, I'm I'm super excited and look forward to to working with everybody.
Yes, thanks. Thanks for host or leading this, and. I think it was a really great discussion, and if the board has a few extra minutes. I just wanted to share a couple of quick updates, but. Pete and my, the staff, if you guys want to end it for the night, feel free.
Thanks, Pete.
Jeff, Cindy, Nancy, and Brett, please submit your time sheets and just text, call me if you have any problems.
I will, I will immediately.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We have a new payroll system, so we have to make sure. But for the zoning commission members, just to let you know, for March, we do have two meetings. March ninth is going to be the North Farms Apartments. I know that was brought up a lot as an example case. That we talked about during this training. So if you have any questions on it beforehand, feel free to call me. You know, Sierra, this will be your first one, but this this was the one I think I told you about last year, that we had two hundred residents. Show up, and it's coming back to us. So.
I totally missed it.
Got it.
First time around, so I'm assuming that's.
Christine, if you want to be. Yeah.
Clean slate. Okay.
So that'll be interesting. And then I did have to schedule a special meeting date for March sixteenth. Aside from our regular schedule for this, a new application for independent living on South Old State. Just the timing of it, I had to schedule that date then. So let me know if you can. I think everybody has said they can go to that, so that's great. We are expecting to twenty-three overlay applications in March, so that would be for an April hearing. So. And that was, Adam is going to probably have to recuse himself for one of those applications. But we should be good to go for there. We are going to be initiating a zoning resolution rewrite, probably at the March sixteenth hearing. So I will be sharing you all a request for a proposal. Outlaw or document that I will be publishing out for consultants to submit. To do it for us. So that will be, I plan on having that ready for the March sixteenth hearing as well. And that's going to just be a quick motion to move forward with doing the zoning resolution rewrite, but it's been a long time coming. So looking forward to that. And the last question I had, since there are so many new board members. Typically, every, every time we have a board member, we give everybody a new zoning resolution book and a comprehensive plan book. So if I did not do that, let me know. The zoning resolution book should be the twenty-twenty. Version, because we did update that last year, so I can provide copies to remember whoever needs it. So.
I was just saying November the fourth, right? Is that the?
Uh, yes, that's the most current version. And I don't think I get, I've given anything to you, Sierra, so I can do that. But.
Thank you.
And Rick, do you have, did I give you copies of the code and comp plan?
Actually, I think you did.
Okay. This whole year is just, or I know it's only been two months. The last year, it's just blended through. Do you guys have any questions for me? No, hopefully you thought that was helpful, so. Well, sorry to time. Oh, Adam, were you just gonna say something?
No, no, go ahead.
Um, I don't, we don't need to make a motion to adjourn. But if everybody's okay, I'd like to end the meeting.
Good.
All right. Well, have a good night, and thanks for your participation, and I will see you in a couple of weeks.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry, one more thing. I just forgot it. How do we feel about doing in-person meetings starting in April?
My two shots. For me.
So I think for North Farms, for instance, we would not do that because of the amount of involvement. But if there was an application that we expected a very low attendance, we'd like to start doing that in April.
Yeah, I mean, I I personally have no problem with that, being in person.
If you do have a problem, or do I? Okay, if if you do have a want to have a problem with it and want to talk about it offline, I'm happy to to address that. We're gonna probably do some form of a Zoom component always and YouTube, so we can always figure that out from there. So, okay, I'm done.
Thanks, Michelle.
All right, thanks. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.